Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer? Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 6th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Do we have any communications?
No, Mayor.
May I have a motion concerning the minutes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, since all members of council have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the work session and the meeting of September 18th, 2018, and the work session and meeting of October 2nd, 2018, if there are no additions or corrections, I move we dispense with the reading of the minutes and that they be approved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Marion Myers. Address is 9410 Second Avenue. We now have a staircase to heaven in Stone Harbor. Did anybody realize that? It was just constructed yesterday on the west wall of the police station. It goes up, but you have to come right back down again because it abuts a window. So I guess my question is, is anybody familiar with what this construction is for? Are they going to cut through the wall? No, nobody knows, I know.
Thanks for telling us.
I don't know what it is. Do you know what it is?
Emergency, out the window? Oh, cutting out, okay. All right. Will there be a tour of this new building when it's? Oh, yes, oh, good.
I would imagine we'll have a form of ribbon cutting and all that.
Even before that, because I can't wait to see it.
She's gonna have to wait.
You have to commit a crime.
You're gonna have to wait.
I think there'll be a dedication, Marion.
Yeah.
And I've recommended that it be on the Garden Club House tour this summer.
My name is Bill Ryder. I live at 250 101st Street, and I'm here to address the parking situation. I know everyone's aware how parking has become a problem in this town. I was wondering if the council would consider enacting an ordinance like Avalon has prohibiting watercraft parking on the street from, I think they have it May 1st to October 1st or something like that. Because on my street, during peak seasons, there's probably six to 10 jet skis parked.
On trailers?
On trailers.
Attached to vehicles?
I know that ordinance in place. Avalon bans, takes that ban even further. Not only is it parking, but at the end of the day, when they come back and clean their jet skis, connect them to hoses and run, I feel like I'm living in a marina rather than 101st Street in Stone Harbor. Sounds like Seattle or Wildwood or something like that. So I just ask the, read it into the minutes and ask you people to consider at least doing what Avalon has in place as well.
Okay. That's something public safety could look at. I'm unfamiliar with that ordinance. I thought it was the same as ours.
They have a sign on the street as you enter Avalon saying parking of watercraft and it cites an ordinance. I didn't take the time.
Right, that's what I'm wondering if they mean the detached trailers as opposed to once it's attached to a motor vehicle, it's a whole different ballgame.
There's two signs.
Yeah.
I don't see any parked in Avalon when I'm riding my bike through town.
Okay, we can look at it.
Thank you.
But we do have something about boats, boats and watercrafts on trailers.
Right.
I thought that was like 24 hours.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, but every forty-eight hours it has to be moved.
Yeah, forty-eight hours, but that's what I'm saying, but it does not if it's attached to a registered motor vehicle and it's a legally registered trailer, it can sit there.
I do understand that.
So I don't know what that, we can look at Avalon's and see.
Well, what about cleaning, you know, running the jet skis and the motors to the boats and double parking in the street while they're doing all that?
Well, you certainly can't double park. I mean, Avalon goes, yeah, that definitely goes without saying, but as I said, we can look at it.
Great.
We can look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address mayor and council?
I'm Tom Grimes.
I'm Jean Grimes.
We live at 8916 Sunset Drive, and from what we've read in the paper, we will be part of the bulkhead issue. We have 62 feet of old bulkhead.
I'm just going to interrupt you for one second. We're going to open up public comments specifically for the bulkhead ordinance. So you're here to address those, to speak about those two ordinances. We will be having a public hearing on that, so at that time, you'll come up to the podium and you can then, that's what you're, that's what you're interested in, okay? Yep, no, that's fine, that's fine. And anybody else who is here to speak to that when we have the public hearing on that ordinance will be opening that up. Is there anybody else that would like to address mayor and council not on the bulkhead issue? Okay. Then we will close public comment. Ordinance 1530.
Mayor and council, I move that ordinance 1530 be taken up on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1529 on second reading?
Berestone Harbor, Cape May.
Right, it's ordinance 1530 we're doing.
Yes.
Okay, 1530 on second reading.
Berestone Harbor, Cape May, ordinance 1530 dock construction.
The public hearing on ordinance 1530 is now open.
This, just by matter of information, the changes to this ordinance basically removes the references to bulkhead construction, and what's left is boat pilings and docks and wharfs. We remove the bulkhead sections because we now have a separate ordinance going forward which will cover bulkhead construction.
So the public hearing on ordinance 1530 is now open. The public hearing is now closed.
Mayor and council, I, let me get my wording right here. Make a motion that 1530 be passed on second reading and advance to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1530 on third and final reading?
Ordinance 1530 dock construction.
Mayor and council, I move that ordinance 1530 be passed on third and final reading, adopted, and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1531.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1531 be taken up on second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1531 on second reading?
An ordinance amending ordinance 1525 of the revised general ordinance is the Berestone Harbor, adding the following language under existing non-conforming bulkheads.
The public hearing on ordinance 1531 is open.
Okay, again, I'm Tom Grimes.
I'm Jean Grimes.
And we live at 8916 Sunset Drive, and, you know, we've been residents for, been taxpayers for 99 years, my family. And we're concerned about the, about the bulkhead ordinance and the cost. And my request and question is, will you support getting a group, a group?
Discount?
Well, discount or, or just the, the cost of, of the bulkhead for a group since there's many people who will be affected eventually.
And I feel like the construction people, I don't know if you're here, will have us in a gotcha situation because we have to do it. So they can sell us, you know, $5,000 or whatever, because we have to do it. So we don't want that to happen, you know, that we'd be taken advantage of.
Well, just by way of information for us, what height is your bulkhead now?
We don't know. She'll tell us tomorrow.
He's gonna call.
Okay, okay.
It's an old bulkhead. No.
Oh, good, then we have time to work this through.
Do you get flooded?
So you're not below four?
Do you get flooded frequently?
Well, not every year, but there was, about three weeks ago, there was a report, I wasn't here at the time, but I reported the water came over the bulkhead.
Over the top. I'm just trying to gauge what level you're at potentially, because obviously that matters to, in terms of the timeframe.
Is there any way we can control the cost?
I think, I think we have, correct me if I'm wrong, sure you will, that, we're going to meet with the, there's like 10 or 11 properties that are in the two-year cycle, which would be the lowest bulkheads in town. And I think our goal is to meet with those people and discuss the way forward. And, and that's certainly an interesting concept, if we could pull, you know, pull some people together with contractors and give them three, three bulkheads as opposed to one. I don't know, but part of the process is going to be to look, look at different ways to get this financed and to keep the, the costs down for those people who may need some help with that. So, I mean, we're, yeah, we're aware of how expensive it is, a proposition to put a bulkhead in, but it's something that we all feel needs to be done. So, once we have, once you have those meetings, maybe we'll have a better idea of how to proceed forward from there.
Also to speak to, I think, I think there was some sort of reference to, for lack of a better term, maybe gouging going on because of this? You feel like you're, you're up against, I would say that I think there's sufficient competition within this industry throughout Cape May County, Atlantic County. I know for a 60-foot bulkhead, somebody will come considerable way to do that work. So I think there's sufficient, it's been my experience in, in general contracting that there's sufficient competition that you can compare reputable contractors. And I think you'll find that that is not the case. And, and don't get me wrong, it is an expensive proposition in any event, and it's significant. I always like to call it investment because it's there to protect your property and the value that you have upland. So I always refer to it as an investment, and a good investment at that. But I, I personally wouldn't fear that situation, and I do live on the bay, as being something that you would be up against. So I think it's just a matter, you know, doing your due diligence and finding the right contractor who bids the right price and is a responsible contractor as well, so you get good work done.
Maybe you could give us a list.
Supply and demand doesn't apply to this situation.
And it is something in our meetings we have talked about, ways that we can assess the homeowners in getting compliance and in seeing if there's some way where we can facilitate some kind of loans or just, I mean, it is something we have talked about. So we can keep an eye on it, and there certainly is a market rate now that we can start to see if, I don't know what we could do as we watch it happen, but I mean, we, it certainly is something to watch.
Yeah, we can continue to look at it. There are options that the borough can do on behalf of the property owners with maybe the possibility of reimbursement to the borough. We are also keeping an eye out if there's any grants that come available. We have heard through the, the chain that they, there will be some at some point, we just don't know when. So we are, you know, keeping, keeping an eye on that, and certainly any that come out, we will, if we're able, will apply for it on behalf of the residents. If not, similar to the house-raising grants, we will notify property owners that they could apply for that.
Okay. Thanks, thank you very much.
And also, I know that the borough also has a lot of bulkhead that they, so, I don't know how you handle that, but maybe you could consider us?
With it.
With, with your contractor, I don't, I don't know how you get your contractor for the ends of the streets.
It's, it's, it's actually an entirely different realm because we're, we're a public entity and you're a private party, so we're governed by many, many different contracts.
Yeah. We are.
We'll actually pay a heck of a lot more than you, if you want to boil it down.
Yes.
We'll pay a lot more than you will per foot.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're, you know, this, this is new to us, too. I mean, we've never had a program like this, so we're kind of learning as we go along, too. Hopefully, we're going to learn a lot with these first 10, 10 installations over the next two years. So you and Jean will benefit by what we've learned going forward when we get into the next batch of, of low bulkheads.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Fred Scott Jordan from 10638 Golden Gate Drive. Some of you have been to my property. I think the Grimes have been beat on years, but I've been here every summer for 65, 64 years. I moved off of Golden Gate for about three years and then was able to move back. So I'm talking for my property and my brother's property next to me, which is 10668. So some of you have seen my bulkhead, or the part of it that's up. So I'm appealing to, I had sent in to the various council members some possible revisions to the wording of the ordinance we're talking about. I don't need to get into the legal details. The basic thing that I'm hoping we can do is, my bulkhead, in fact, if the DEP hadn't taken so long to issue my permits, I wouldn't even be here because my bulkhead would have been able to be built to 6.2 feet. So when you're planning out all this other stuff, keep in mind it's going to take the state a lot longer than you think it's going to take, particularly for somebody who's going to kind of start now from scratch. So what I'm hoping is, I'm fully fine with building my bulkhead to 6.2 feet and being committed to build the, to the eight-foot level by 2050. I'll be about 95 years old at that particular point in time. If I was going to be tearing my house down, I wouldn't be here either because then my house would be up on pilings and there wouldn't be any issue. But my house was built in 1940. My brother's house, I lived next to it, was built around the same time, and we don't really have any intention of tearing our house down, which was one of the suggestions that somebody made, that, well, why don't you just tear your house down, then you won't have to worry about a four-foot wall in front of your windows. So what I would like is, and I have the wording, if somebody would like me to read it, a revision that would allow people that want to rebuild, reconstruct, I don't exactly know what the terminology is specifically for being able to change the ordinance, but allow the people that want to build now to 6.2 feet, and they're still going to be committed to build to eight feet by 2050. Nobody's looking to get around that. I think the big problem for the town in general is getting everybody to at least 6.2 feet. So I don't have any problem with that at all. My guy can either drive down what he's already put in, or he can cut off what he's already put in very easily. It won't cost me any more money, but I know, I think there's a lot of other people that are in the same boat, the people that are at a lower elevation. Right now, my brother's property, when you walk out, well, with the way the bulkhead is now, he's going to have to go up roughly three feet, three and a half feet to be able to get over the wall to get down to his dock. By 2050, we could have a whole different situation. We could change this ordinance 20 years from now, and it's probably going to have to be more than eight feet. Hopefully not, because of global warming, but for the people that have the ability to put a new bulkhead in now, I'm just asking whether or not we could change the ordinance so it's allowed as a exemption by the engineer, however it gets worded, that people that want to build now can build to 6.2, and they still are committed to building to eight feet in 2050. So I don't know how you want me to present that from a wording standpoint. I had emailed in the copy that I suggested being changed, but maybe there's a better way to do that from a legal standpoint.
When you emailed in, did you give contact information, the telephone and, and your email address?
Yes.
There's a, there's a telephone number there?
Yes. Yeah, it's my company email, as well as the company phone number.
If you would like to read what, that suggestion into the record?
Okay.
You can.
Okay, this is referencing, let's see here. It's the section, it's the exemption listed in, in ordinance 1525 under permits, section two, and the change I'm suggesting should read, "The borough engineer may relax or waive any or all requirements that are set forth above within the application for a permit pertains to reconstruction, comma, restoration, or repair work. That waiver would require that the said reconstruction, renovation, and repair work bring the elevation of the bulkheads to 6.2 NAVD 88 or higher, and an elevation of 8.00 feet NAVD 1998, no later than 2050. In relaxing or waiving any such requirements, the borough engineer shall have the authority to require the submission of such plans, drawings, contract documents, as the engineer in his sole discretion determines will be accurately, will accurately depict the reconstruction, renovation, or repair work to be performed." I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know where this wording should be changed or not changed. I'm just suggesting that you allow people that want to build now to 6.2 feet, instead of forcing everybody to go to eight feet. If the ultimate goal is you've got until 2050, why would you force everybody else to go to eight, eight feet when you can get everybody to comply to 6.2 or above? Maybe certain properties are not. This, my, my specific situation is, if you're tearing your house down, I think that's a whole different situation. If you're rebuilding, you don't want to tear down your house from 1940, and you want to have a view out of your building other than a plastic wall in front of your windows, why not do it to 6.2? And just for the record, the two properties on each side of our two properties are at 6.2. And my neighbor on the left-hand side had his bulkhead done last year. So now we're going to be another two feet higher than that.
Okay, I'll start. We, you know, we, we've looked at this problem now, we've been looking at it for over a year, and we've looked at it from many different directions. And we've talked to a lot of different people about the best way to go forward, and we settled on this eight-foot height as being a good, a good goal to get to by 2050. Now, we were well aware that, because we, we discussed it, there's a, there's a handful of properties, I'm going to put it maybe 15, 16 properties, that are built down very close to grade level, like yours. And it's going to be a problem for those people. So what are, what are we going to do? We can't, we can't just give an exception to 16 properties or 18 properties, and then we have eight-foot, 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 and we have a 6.2. Just hear me out. So if, I think if the particular property owner has a sound structural bulkhead, the compromise was, we would allow him to maybe cap it if the engineer says that it's practical and it's structurally sound, and go to six-foot-two. But that's the only compromise. So if it's not, if it's an old bulkhead, if it's a bulkhead that needs to be replaced in total, then it has to go to eight feet. And the reasoning, at least, this is my reasoning, if we're never going to get to eight feet by building 6.2-foot bulkheads, we'll never get there. And this problem with the rising sea levels, it mean, it's been happening and it's going to continue happening between now and 2050. There's, there's an eight-foot bulkhead going up between 93rd and 94th Street on the channel. And I saw the one on your brother's, and I went over to your property, I spoke to you that day.
The one on 92nd and 93rd was a teardown.
I know, I know, but it's still an eight-foot bulkhead. And the way we're going to get to eight-foot bulkheads is one bulkhead at a time. That's how we're going to get there. If, if we allow people to commit, if we grant you an exception, and may, I don't know, maybe everybody will agree with you, then the next bulkhead that comes in, there'll be more people coming through that door asking for the same exception, and we're going to be building six-foot-two bulkheads. That's not going to get us where we need to be. So, you know, it, it's unfortunate that the cut happened when it did, but it, we didn't hide this. I mean, it's the, feeding, the public meetings, you know, they're, they're open. I think it's probably been in the hurl. And it's, it's what we worked out to get to where we want to be. It's why we have that graduated schedule of, you know, four and below and four and a half to four, five to four and a half, is to gradually give people time, like Mr. and Mrs. Grimes, to get theirs up where it needs to be. But everyone was adamant on the committee, the subcommittee, that if it's a new, if you're putting in a new bulkhead, it's got to be eight feet, and that's how we're going to start, and that's how we're going to go forward. And those, those properties like yours, it, I understand, it's, 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 it's going to be a big adjustment. I don't know how you're going to work around it, but I'm sure you could figure a way out. And we're, we're on that march to eight feet. That's my opinion. You can add, add to that.
I mean, I'll jump in.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
That, again, I, I agree with Ray. I certainly can sympathize, and we did, in fact, discuss exactly what you're bringing before us, the situation as coming to fruition on several properties. I just, in order to add, I agree with what Ray has said, but to put it in a more broader context, this is just one layer of what we're up against down the road. So when, when we look at this island as a whole, which is, you know, really our job here, we really, by 2050, we not, we don't need just bulkheads coming up. We need homes, we need grade, we need roads. We're trying to figure out how, how to get our roads up. So it's got to start somewhere, and, you know, for better or worse, this is the beginning of us getting to a much higher elevation on this island, so that our island exists in the state that it is now, we're better down the road when we're faced with, you know, severe, severe sea, sea water tide rise. So I can, again, I can certainly sympathize, and I wish I had an easy solution for you. The easiest that I can come up with is, you know, would you consider, it's not, easiest is not easy. It's just the easiest that I can come up with is perhaps raising your home to a little bit higher elevation.
I can't do that without tearing the house down. The zoning won't allow it, based on the dollar value of the house, and I've already had an architect look at that. I don't have, if it's more than $50,000 worth of improvements, do you have to tear the house down and start over?
I.
That's what I was told.
Do we not have an exemption for that when it comes to raising?
No, I don't, you're right, I don't know that.
I don't know that that's the case. I think.
No, that's certainly not the case, that you have to tear it down.
Fifty percent.
No, it's, the difference is, if you do 40% or more structural improvement, you have to raise the house.
Yeah, I don't know the exact.
So that's what the ordinance is. So in other words, you're, you're actually, you're actually being encouraged to raise your house, not told. So if you, if you do a 40,000, if you say whatever your assessment's $80,000, you do a $40,000 renovation project, you got to raise the house.
Right.
So no, you don't have to knock it down, you have to raise it.
If I was going to like that idea, I'd tear the house down and build a brand new house.
Okay, right.
Which I don't want to do.
Right. No, that's the circumstances under which you, you're mandated to raise the house.
So I, if I could ask a clarifying question, because maybe I don't understand ordinances, what's the rule as to when you got to build eight feet versus 6.2? Because it's very vague in the, the list of different sizes, as to, is it only reconstruction or repair? How's that, how's that? I don't.
If it's a new bulkhead, if it's a new bulkhead, it's eight feet.
And a new bulkhead is defined as what?
New one.
So one in front of another one is new?
Or replace in kind. Or replace in kind, depending on what your CAF or DEP permit says. But it would be replacing existing in place in kind or going in front of it with a new bulkhead, if that's permitted.
Okay.
And one of the things in the committee that we considered, the compromise was in those folks that are 5.5 and below, not telling them, you have to come to eight feet in two years. We were, that was the compromise, as opposed to saying, everybody, it's eight feet and that's it, it's a steadfast number. So that was the, the part of the compromise that we thought seemed to be fair.
But what was that again?
Instead of just coming, this ordinance rolling out and saying, you've got to get to eight feet, no matter what, in two years, no matter what your height is. That's why it was rolled out this way, where the folks that are, have the most breach, they have two years, then the four years, then the six. There were some people that were supportive of, let's just go eight feet. Why are we telling these guys they can even go to 6.2? We should tell them they have to go to eight. But we're giving them an opportunity, if it's structurally sound, to cap it and get to the 6.2, and then that'll stop the most often breaches at this point. But if they're replacing it, they have to go to the eight.
Well, if you're allowing people to build to 6.2, that Well, if you're allowing people to build a 6.2, that kind of kills the argument.
But they're not building it because they could have a structurally sound one. That's the difference.
Terminology isn't building, but you're allowing people to build 6.2 when the comment, whichever gentleman said it, we have to all be at eight feet, you're not-
But no, we're not allowing them to build it. They have a structurally sound bulkhead. That's different than one that is not structurally sound.
Yeah.
So it's just to, you know, that's why somebody that put in a bulkhead two years ago.
Right.
You know, that was to, to capture those folks. That's where we found, that's where we compromised, instead of saying, everybody, eight feet, and just do it now. We don't care what you put in or when, tear it out and go to eight feet. We didn't, we thought this was a better way to roll it out.
I just have a little comment I'd like to make that, and I, I'm not unsympathetic, I understand, but those of us who live in the beach block and those who are beachfront went through the same thing when the dunes were put in. Nobody had a voice, there was no ordinance passed, the dunes were put in. Everyone who was beachfront lost their view from the first floor. Those of us who were ragged little, we too lost our view from the first floor, and there was nothing we could do about it. But thank God the dunes are there.
Yeah.
And that's, that's all this is meant for. It, it is a problem. I have an older house. It is a problem with the older homes, that they're not elevated. And ours is, is high, at a, high enough that we don't get flooded, but still, if the dunes weren't there, we'd have a major problem. But I wasn't happy to see them go in when they first went in.
Was there any consideration given to the elevation of the actual properties throughout the town? Because my street never floods, never, never.
The only consideration was actually, kind of, worked in favor of what we, what we promulgated, was that if you are higher, there will be less exposed bulkhead, if you will, when you do go to eight feet. So that if you're, let's say you're at a high part on the island, on the bay, at six and a half feet, well, then you're only going to have eighteen inches of bulkhead so that, you know, your grade is already high. So that lessens the impact. Imagine if your home sat on a lot that it was at four feet.
Well, I was just thinking that.
So then that, that one, it's really, really dramatic. I, in terms of-
Those of you that have seen my property, there's a three-foot wall of plastic. So if your property was three feet lower, you'd have a, you'd have a five-foot wall of-
There's locations where, where that-
Well, that's why I said, I didn't know if there's any consideration given to that. It's a little late at this point.
There, there certainly was, but again.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else want to vote in favor of my suggestion?
The only other question I have, you, you said you have a CAFR permit?
Yes, I do.
When, do you know when that was issued?
Uh, I have it out in the car, but it would have been maybe four months ago. Took a year and a half. They kept telling us to apply for it one way, and then she'd go, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's not the way you want to do it. And then I did it again. Finally had to hire a lawyer and the engineers to get involved, be able to get it. It literally took a year and a half. I don't think I'd be able to go ahead with it if I didn't have the permit, right?
Right.
Yeah, so I definitely have it.
I just know how hard and the, the quality and the cap, the, the time that we have put into this, and Ray's right, it's been a year, and we've tried to think of every single scenario to try to make it as fair as possible. We had three engineers, we had Dr. Lenore Tedesco, we had, I can't even say, Wally, we, we had a great group of people that all understood where, where we needed to go. And I'm very comfortable with, with the end result. And I do have sympathy, and by the way, I'm on 10410 Sunset Drive, and I don't want to disagree with you, but I can remember standing and watching, I forget which storm it was, because it had never flooded back there, but I lived through the one that I looked across the bay, and there was every single bulkhead, including yours. It was just a solid lake. And I saw it, never, probably will never see it again, but it does flood back there. But that's off the subject, but I support this because I think that we are now setting the example that hopefully most other people, other towns will do. And I, I support it, I understand your situation, but I support this.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of it too. I just want to be able to go to 6.2 and give me thirty years to go to the eight, that's all. By then I'll tear my house down, or my kids will tear it down, build a new house and put it on stilts, that's all. I'm a salesperson, if you don't ask, the answer's no.
That's true.
Maybe there's some more comments. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address mayor and council during this, this public hearing on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1531 be passed on second reading, advance to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1531 on third and final reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 1525, the revised general ordinances, adding the following language under existing non-conforming bulkheads.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1531 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Ordinance 1532?
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1532 be taken up on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1532 on second reading?
An ordinance of the Borough of Stone Harbor, Canada, Cape May, New Jersey, establishing uniform regulations for the grading of building lots within the Borough of Stone Harbor.
The public hearing on ordinance 1532 is open. The public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1532 be passed on second reading and advance to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1532 on third and final reading?
An ordinance of the Borough of Stone Harbor, Canada, Cape May, New Jersey, establishing uniform regulations for the grading of building lots within the Borough of Stone Harbor.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1532 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-191.
Madam Mayor, I ask that resolution 2018 S-191 be adopted.
Second.
Uh, this is a change order, third and final change order for the Golden Gate Reconstruction. The net result is a $58,976.28 decrease in the overall cost.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-192.
Mayor and council, I offer resolution 2018 dash S dash 192 for adoption.
Second.
This, uh, this resolution, since Mrs. Lane decreased her contract by $55,000, I want to increase the police station expansion contract by $25,000.
We're still ahead.
Any discussion?
It's, uh, it's because of the fire control panels in the buildings having to be separated and put in different places.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-193.
I'd like to offer 2018 S-193 for adoption.
Second.
This is what I was talking about in our report. This is resolution authorizing the extension of a professional service with Cowie.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-194.
I offer resolution 2018 S-194 for adoption.
Second.
And this is a check in the amount of $400 for a street opening permit that has to be refunded at 302-105th Street. The address is on a county road, not a borough road.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-195.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2018 S dash 195 for adoption.
Second.
Uh, this is to award the bid for a maintenance trailer to the lowest responsible bidder, Waterworks Supply Co., Inc., in the amount of $68,958.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-196.
I'd like to offer resolution 2018 S-196 for adoption.
Second.
Um, this is disposal of surplus, surplus property. It is listed on the back, the things that are going to go to gov deals.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
I need a motion for a special event, the Kids Harvest Festival, October 27th, 2018, at 11 o'clock AM.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to go out to bid for the 2018 Utility and Road Program.
I'll make that motion, advertise October 19th, bid opening November 1, possible award November 6.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to approve a fireman, Jonathan Schwartz.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing no items on the agenda for discussion, may I have a motion approving the bills?
Um, may I have a few things to say, please? Um, I had asked for this earlier and didn't have it in time for the work session, but I always like to give an update on our library. And, um, in 2018, we had 105 programs. In 2017, there were 77. In 2017, the people count was 18,534. In 2018, it was 18,465. The, um, year-to-date count, from January to September of '17, was 31,426. And year-to-date, from January to December this year, is 31,214. So we're seeing a great number of people, and that library is really doing a phenomenal job, and it has a special place in my heart. Now, all that said, I have something else I would like to say. Most of you all know that I am moving. And, um, this has been a very difficult decision. My plan was to remain till the end of the year, but things have changed in my life that I unfortunately will not be able to do that. This has been the most amazing experience, and I so appreciate the respect, the honor, and the trust that all of you who voted for me placed in me to do this. I didn't write anything because this was, I didn't expect to do this right now. I thought I'd have till December, but, um, I just, um, loved doing this, the good times and the bad times, and they so far outweigh the bad times. It's been a rewarding experience, and I think I really got more out of this than what I gave. So, all that said, I will offer my resignation at the end of this week. But the last thing I would like to do is, I would like to place a nomination for president of council tonight. I would like to nominate Josie Rich to be president. I know of no one who holds Stone Harbor dearer to her heart or who has done more for this town than Jocelyn Rich. And I would like to nominate her to take over this position, and I will miss you all.
And I wholeheartedly and without reservation second that motion.
Is there just, was one, is there anything procedurally we need to do before we do this, like the, just making sure? The, so the resignation is accepted now? Right, so I think first we-
The resignation has to be submitted.
Had, that's what I'm just trying to see, procedurally, what do we do first?
You have to receive the resignation and accept it.
Okay, so we can't wait till the end of the week?
No.
Okay.
If you're going to act on this now, you would have to receive the resignation and accept it.
Well, then I should resign from the presidency and nominate Jocelyn to be president.
So procedurally, she would resign from the position of president, not from council?
And you would have to accept that.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the resignation of Mrs. Lane as council president? So-
I will make that with regret.
Is that what we're doing?
We're accepting, right now, we're accepting Karen's resignation as council president.
As council president.
So, we have the motion moved by Councilman Parzak, we have the second by Man Torey Gallagher. So, clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
So now we need to do the motions for, to fill the council president spot, so-
Now, I, I did not mean to blindside anyone this, I didn't-
Oh, you didn't? Believe me, Ray Charles could see this.
I didn't. Truthfully, it just came out this week. So, uh, I would like to place a nomination for president of council, Josie Rich.
Second.
Well, I guess what we should say, do we have any other nominations? Do I have to say that procedurally? I don't hear any other nominations. So, clerk, call the roll.
I, can I just speak?
Sure, discussion, sure.
You know, I, I was hoping that we could vote in, uh, for the last three months of her term, Joan Kramer, to serve as council president, and then I was standing there ready to nominate and vote for Josie Rich beginning in January. Like, that's not going to happen, I guess, because we-
I'll, I'll jump into Joan and-
What you, just say, you were, anything else to say? Ray, you were?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, Charles, yes.
I just wanted to jump in and, and reiterate what Ray just said. In fact, Joan Kramer had asked that, in her honor, that she be allowed to, if, if Karen were to leave, that she would be given the privilege and honor of stepping into her shoes. And I had told her that I would support her in that. I told the same thing to, to Josie myself at some point a while ago, that I would support her in that. So it, it is nothing, it has less to do with not supporting Josie here at all, and it has to do with honoring Joan Kramer's time as her, as I, as I see befitting for her, her time and her dedication to this borough, that she be allowed to serve for that time period, which is essentially two months from now.
She did serve as president. She was president of council.
I think, but I just think, just, it's just unfortunate that, um...
It is, and it's not of my design.
It's just unfortunate that, that she's in Europe and this is happening now, and I think we were all, we were, we were ready to support Josie in January. And just, you know, other than just saying it's just unfortunate that this is how it happened, and this is how it is. So.
But I would continue with my motion.
Okay, we haven't called the roll.
Well, I could, I could nominate Joan Kramer.
Right.
And we can have a vote.
Okay, so, so Mr. Parzak nominates Joan Kramer, I need a second.
Second.
So, we'll, we'll call for a vote for, and procedurally, somebody help me out here. So we're going to call for a vote for Josie for that motion. So clerk, call the roll, the vote you are casting is for Josie Rich to assume the presidency of council.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
No.
Mr. Parzak?
No.
So knowing that the majority has the yes vote, do I have to call for a vote for Mrs. Kramer as well?
I render it moot.
Okay. So the motion carries. Now, may I, anybody have anything more to say?
No.
May I have a motion approving the bills?
Well, that's you now.
I make a motion to approve the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and the vouchers are properly signed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?